All right, good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, June 15th. Let's rise and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I will. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, thanks.
Seven-nothing present quorum?
And this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Hugo. Support by trustee Raridan.
Raridan, okay. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Thanks. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And please, for the record, if you can provide your name and address, be helpful.
In a minute.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Mike Hoffman. I live at 1188 Windsor Street, Fenton, between Maple and Hill.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know if this is the proper place for it, but I just have a question, if there's any limits to how much, how far and wide a person can build a deck in their yard. My neighbor, he's an intrusive neighbor. He's a nice guy, but he's not very neighborly considerate. I just had a thing with him last week. We called the township, had the code violation. He had his 35-foot trailer parked in his driveway for five weeks. All his kids, him, they're parking out on the road. He went left away, left his truck parked in front of my house for five days on the street out there. He says it's half and a half, whatever, it's parked on the street for five days. We've gone over, he's always parked in front of my house, parked in front of my house when nobody's parked in front of his house. I don't know if you know the streets over there, there's only 20 feet or so between our houses. It's narrow. He parks his ski-doo trailers in the area between our houses, sea-doo trailers in the area between our house, puts his dog out at night, out of his garage, it comes around in the area between our house, barks for a half hour, his kid bounces a basketball late into the evening. It's, his driveway is by our living room. That's passed. That's, we've gone over that last week. He's, and he's not trying to do stuff, it's just the way he does. He does everything on our side of the house, between our two houses. Now, you know, the houses are made so your garage is on the left side and your, and your kitchen's on the right side, and you got a sliding door, you come out, your deck's there. You build a deck 16, I got a 16 by 16, he had a 16 by 24 before. He put a, he built a family room on it. So now we're kind of intimidated going, because the dog barks at us through their family room, we don't know if they're looking at us, and our deck has run us off. Now, after we've done this just recently, he surrounded his, 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 his deck slash family room that he built and attached to his house, and he's surrounded it, and he's basically gone the whole width of his house and garage, and they're in our yard practically on their deck. We can't look out our bedroom windows, we can't, they're there, that's the whole thing. He's gone farther out into his yards, farther wider, and I just don't know if there's any limit to it, but, you know, what if he next year decides to put on a two-story addition onto the deck he's got, he's gonna be right in our bedroom. It's just, he just, can he just keep going and adding and adding, right up to the property line with these decks?
What I'd like to do is get, we have your address, but I'd like to get your contact information and follow up with you.
All right.
Give you a call tomorrow and go over each of those things, because it sounds like there's multiple things going on there.
Right.
But I appreciate you coming here and...
He's a nice guy. Don't get me wrong, and he's mad, because, you know, when I say your dog barks, well, that's what dogs do, or that's what kids do, bounce a basketball. It's just, you know, it's always when I'm sitting there trying to watch TV at night and stuff.
You know, we don't make any value judgment on whether people are good or bad, it's depending on if they're following the ordinances or not, so. Yeah, please call Mr. Limada tomorrow, and like I say, there's multiple things going on there, and we can definitely have some...
Well, after we called the township, they wrote him a letter. He's moved the trailer, he's moved the, he moved his travel trailer, he moved his sea-doo trailer back to the back by his shed back there. He's quit having a dog, and lots of that's cleared out, but I just don't know what's going on with this deck, how big you can build and how far you can go, and, you know...
We'll, we'll be glad to talk, have someone talk with you about that, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have any public comment they would like to make? Good evening.
Good evening. Carla Christensen, 7477 Porter, for the Grand Blank Historic District Commission. Just a little bit of an update, under COVID restrictions, we got next to nothing done, but we have resumed having meetings other than by Zoom, except my participation, the last one was by speakerphone. Mostly, we're working on the ghost walk at the cemetery. We're still working on staffing, costuming, and details like that. The Perry Open House is scheduled to take place in October. That's kind of taken a backseat to the ghost walk. I've left a first draft of one of the three flyers that I did not edit on the table over there, if you're interested in taking one of them. Initially, it was to be free, which the flyer still states, but in view of the fact that Fenton charges $10 for their ghost walk, and will probably need to pay for costumes and such, current thought is to charge $3 for pre-registration, $5 onsite if there are tickets left, and children 12 and under free. So, work in progress. There is...
August 7th is the ghost walk?
August 7th is the date for the ghost walk, and October 8th is the, October 9th, excuse me, Saturday, October 9th, is the date for the Perry Open House, Perry Pioneer Day. And with careful planning, any luck and a little bit of budget tossing around, we'll have a blacksmith there this year. So, blacksmith, maybe laundry day, rope making is very popular, spinning, wheat weaving, all kinds of strange things you don't see done anymore. So, good time to be had by all.
You guys do a great job with that. Thank you, Carla. Anybody else wish to make public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. And we are actually going to postpone recognition of Mr. Hagan, who served on the Board of Review for 28 years. We're going to recognize him along with several other volunteers at our next meeting. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time. Motion by Raridan, trustee Raridan, support by trustee Fike.
Okay, motion.
We can just do that by...
Supported by Fike.
We can, we can just do a voice vote.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along to new business. Board will hear a presentation regarding the Assessing Department operations from Director of Assessing, Dulcey Ranta. Good evening.
I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to meet me and for me to be able to address you, to give you a real quick overview of what we do for you in our Assessing Department. So, you all know I'm Dulcey Ranta. I've been involved with local government for 23 years. I have served as a deputy treasurer and also as an assessor of record for different communities. I am a master level assessor, and I'm helping you guys through your transition, being that you require a Level 4, and we're hoping to transition you through, and then in three years, we'll have somebody trained that will be mentored and be able to take over the department. We're required by the state law to have an assessing department. What a lot of local townships or municipal board members sometimes don't realize is we're responsible for the majority of your revenue that comes in for running your general services. So I want you to think of what you do as a taxpayer, as a property owner. When you get your tax bill and you see your jurisdictional taxes, whether you have monies that go to the school, monies that go to your ISD, or to other county programs, or local millages that have been voted on by the voters within your community. Those can include veterans programs, it can include recreational programs. Anything that you see on your tax bill, as a taxpayer, are going to be impacted by your assessing department. We establish your individual assessments for all properties that are taxable within your jurisdiction. So we have a very important function that our team performs for the township. So when you pay your taxes, even though nobody likes to pay their taxes, you can see where your monies go to help support and to run different programs within our township or schools. Now, as a township board member, it's your responsibility to not think as a taxpayer so much, but to be looking at what would be an appropriate or a responsible responsibility of a board member as to what you would be asking your taxpayers to vote for, what you'd be going out on millid rates for, and then also understanding how an assessing department would need to be properly staffed, meaning being educated, having the experience, and to make sure that we're meeting all the functions that are required by state law. Now, that includes going out and completing 20% of the inspections every year. The General Property Tax Act requires that all properties be valued every year. Well, it would be physically impossible for us to be able to review every single parcel every year. So we have been allowed by administrative rules by the State Tax Commission to do 20%. So we do a systematic, set up a schedule that we go out and do the 20%. Our staff here at Grand Blank Township has a great history of completing all of their 20% reviews. So that's something that you guys should be very proud of as a board, that you have staff that's willing to go out there and accomplish those goals that are required. They also go out every time there's new permits pulled for new construction, so they've been staying on top of the growth that you're experiencing here in Grand Blank. Well, I just wanted to share some numbers with you real quick. So our assessing values are going to be 50% of true cash. So now, when we talk as assessors, we say we don't follow sales. We analyze sales that take place within the two-year sales study time period. So I wanted to let you know that over the 2020 values going into 2021, you have a very active market here in Grand Blank, which is something that a lot of communities would probably be very jealous of. We saw a 4.9% increase in our assessed values based on market. So it's going to be real interesting to see where we're going to be at, starting in 2022, with what we're seeing. It's definitely a seller's market right now, and we're seeing a lot of increased sales, and that means increased value, of course, to the township. Now, looking at our taxable values, our inflation rate multiplier going into 2021 was 1.4%. You guys have had enough transactions that have uncappings occurred, and new construction, that you saw a 4.6% increase this year. That's amazing. That's showing that you've got a lot of growth, you're a very progressive community. It's very exciting that you are not seeing any type of issues, that you have a lot of positive things going forward.
Dulcey, what was the 4.6, again, I'm sorry?
Your taxable value increase. Now, that's important as board members, because your taxable value is what generates your tax revenues. So that's a number that we are really excited to see going up based upon conditions within your township. Now, I wanted to just kind of give you an idea, as trustee members, we are a complete generation removed from the education of Proposal A. So when this all was passed in 1994, everybody was real aware of what Proposal A did. It captured taxable value during your ownership timeframe of your property. So we're not as actively educating new buyers as we had been in the past. So now what we're seeing, and what our staff has experienced, our team here for our Assessing Department, is we're doing a lot of re-education to new homeowners, because they're not being educated at the time of purchase that their taxable value is gonna uncap due to Proposal A. And that's through no error of our department. We don't even know that property's selling until after the fact. So we spend a lot of time having the conversations with the taxpayers, explaining that there's been an uncapping, this is Proposal A, you know, now you're gonna be subject to the new taxable value that will then cap. So unfortunately, we hear a lot of negative feedback, and our staff is very good at trying to educate and to promote the education, so that if we even hear, if somebody's looking at property, I've heard the conversations by them saying, "This is Michigan law." So even if you're not gonna buy in Grand Blank Township, it's very important you understand this is how this will work. So as trustees, when we start preparing the 2022 assessments, and as you know, there's hardly any inventory, people are paying, you know, high dollar for their homes, be prepared. You may be in Walmart, you may be in Myers, you may be anywhere at the post office, and if people recognize you as a trustee member or an officer, they may be seeing what's going on over there. Your taxing is so high, because we truly are a generation removed from the Proposal A education. So that, just want to give you guys a friendly heads up, so you're not blindsided by that going forward. So one of the most important things that I'd like to bring up about our staff and our team is we're only gonna be as accurate or as capable as we are educated, as we have the experience, and if we're adequately staffed within our department. We have 14,000-plus parcels, and if we are to be outperforming all the required inspections, keeping up on the new construction, that's why we had went to fill an MCAO position, to make it more of a residential position, because it's been so active. Let me see here. Part of the assessing, too, is we always start by making sure we have adequate land values, and we build from there. So if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce you to our assessing team. If you ladies would please come up and join me. So when I say I can't do my job without them, I truly mean it. So we have Diana Henderson, she's been with the township for 33 years. She is an MCAO, she's a certified officer with the, with the state. She provides our initial point of contact. So when you hear about having great customer service, or the lady up at the front counter in the assessing department, this is the, the face you wanna put with the name.
She does all the educating of all the people that are...
Absolutely. She's very patient, and she does quite well. Me, on the other hand, it's probably the best thing that they go through. So she reviews a lot of our deeds and does the processing. So she's the one that's kind of our capping, uncapping guru in our office. So she's responsible for that, and also she enters all of our property transfer affidavits in our PREs. Thank you, Diana. And then we have Teresa Wood. She is, been with the township for 19 years. She's one class away from getting her Michigan Assessing, Advanced Assessing Office certification. She handles all of our, well, half of the residential appraisals, and doing the field work and picking up new construction. So we're real pleased that she decided to go for her Level 3, and we only have one more class to go, so it's always wonderful, I believe, all the time in investing in education. Then we have Di, Danny Harrington, I was reading the wrong note. She's been with the township for 17 years and brings a vast working knowledge from a multiple different departments coming into the assessing team. She has indicated, and we've been doing this process, because she would like to get her advanced level, or her master's level, so that's part of the three-year transition. I'm here to help mentor, to help explain things, explain how things work, and so when we are doing our training, if it's something that they haven't had the opportunity to be exposed to, I'm helping them so they feel comfortable with things that come forward. I'm kind of a hands-on person, and I like them to feel very valued and understand where we're coming from.
Very good.
So this is your assessing team, and do you have any questions for me or anything?
I'm Gaster Fike.
Yes.
So reiterate, when are my taxes going up, and when is that gonna come?
Your taxes are gonna go up every year.
Right, I mean...
So you're gonna see, of course, the inflation rate happening. Did you just recently purchase?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you'll get hit with the uncapping beginning in 2022. So the taxes that you receive this July 1st and this December 1st are gonna be reflective of the capped value on December 31st. So this next year, it'll uncap, so you have almost a year to prepare for that uncapping.
But for most people, let's say that haven't purchased recently, their taxes will go up how much by?
It's, it's capped by Proposal A, so you're gonna see either a 5% or whichever's less of the inflation rate multiplier. So we haven't had that rate established yet by the State Treasury Department. So what they do is they analyze the Consumer Price Index for September to October from two years ago, get that compiled average, and they compare it to the next year's 12-month average from September to October. That difference on the Consumer Price Index is what indicates your inflation rate multiplier. So we're guaranteed by Proposal A, it won't be more than 5%. But the last time we saw anything even close to 5% was 4.4, and that was in 1999. Yeah. So...
Get ready.
Yeah, get ready.
Joel, did the person before you own the house for a long time?
Not a real long time, no.
Okay. Might not be too bad, then.
Do you have any thoughts on if it's an idea what yours will be?
Yeah, generally don't go to the audience again, but, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Are you saying that Uncap A is gonna end, and we're gonna go up to full price on our...
No. Proposal A will stay in effect because it was voted on by the voters, so it would take an act of voters to change it.
Well, that's just kind of how I understand it.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's just mainly for new purchasers.
Buys your home.
Yeah, it's for new purchasers that would have that.
Yeah, and somebody buys your house, it's gonna go Uncap. You got a fabulous team here, too.
Yes, we do.
I've known them for a number of years since I've been working here, but, but just phenomenal people, and that, you guys doing a phenomenal job. And you must be doing a great job educating people, because I don't get very many complaints, but, but, you know, I think, you know, the uncapping, obviously, with, with the sales that we have going on right now, you know, but we'll probably get a little bit of heat from, but the, the education that we end up telling people, and I know Dennis tells us to people, too, and people at the front desk, is that, you know, we only keep 17% of what we collect, you know, and you were mentioning that it's, you know, important for the township, but actually, you guys do the work for the county, too.
And the schools.
And the schools, because we collect all the revenue for them, and without us, and we fund more than half the county in terms of their budget, so you guys are doing the lion's share of the work for Genesee County, too. And when we end up going to court to fight, we're doing all the heavy lifting there, without any assistance financially.
Let me give you just a real quick, I get asked this a lot from many different boards, where does your value lie? I lost that earring again. If you were looking at the residential classification, you have 1.2 billion in assessed value coming out of your residential classification. In your commercial classification, you have 409 million. Industrial, 57 million. And then your personal property is 97 million. So your residential class and your residence are your primary funding source for...
Interesting.
And I can, I can leave this for you, Scott.
Yeah, what, where do we see the increase in taxable value coming from residential or commercial?
Mainly, it's gonna be your residential due to the uncapping and the new construction that's taken place. From my understanding, and again, I'm still getting all of my education on the different permits, most of your permits are coming from new construction and residential. Yep.
And it probably varies from year to year, like...
Correct.
When you have a Magna built, it's $50 million.
Sure. Yeah.
Obviously, that's gonna probably...
Correct.
...be a little stronger in that particular year.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for assessing?
No?
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for the great work you guys do, too. And that surely is a thankless job to them. Okay, item B, the board will consider Resolution 21-20 for local government approval of a Class C liquor license for tournaments for charity and Werewolf Kills Golf and Country Club from August 23rd through the 29th, 2021, in support of the Ally Challenge. Mr. Limada?
This is a resolution that comes before you every year, except for last year because of COVID, but every year, the tournament, they have to get government's approval to move forward with the liquor license. They have the dates in there. This one shows that it's gonna run, it's Class C license, it'll run from August 23rd to the 29th, and it requires board approval. Again, these things go through, they work with our police chief and Captain Bowserman on creating, make sure everything's safe, and this is just really a formality that the board is asked to approve this license, so that they have the ability to serve alcohol at the golf tournament.
Any questions for Mr. Limada?
We need a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'll entertain them. Mr. White, making motion.
I'll second.
Support by Treasurer Kilmer.
Support by Kilmer, okay.
This is a resolution, so, right?
Need a record roll. All right, trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, item C, the board will hear a presentation from Director Sears regarding sewer capacity upgrades as an alternate, alternative to Kersley Creek Interceptor.
Hello, good evening.
Let me bring up the...
If you can go to that part of the agenda, Scott, the, it's just a PDF right in the agenda.
Okay. I think you emailed it, or, I think, I have it emailed to you as well. Here it is. Is that good?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as everybody can see it. You also have this in your packet. Last, at the last board meeting, you heard a presentation from John O'Brien, from Genesee County Drain Commissioner, Water and Waste Services, about the potential KCI Sewer Interceptor project that they are trying to get off the ground between Grand Blank Township and Oakland County. Tonight, we decided it would probably be a good idea to go through and kind of explain what the alternatives to that project are. There are two large sewer interceptor projects that really have spurred the talk about KCI, and both, both projects, either way we go, either with KCI or with these projects, solve our issue of capacity. And the reason, the only reason we are looking at these projects is because of the lack of capacity in the southeastern portion of the township, which is the Woodfield area, where Tech Village is gonna be built, the Baldwin Road corridor, all of those areas where everybody seems to be building right now. So the first project, which you heard Mr. O'Brien speak to last meeting, is the District 6 Sewer, or he referred to it as the Bush Creek Sewer. It's approximately 3.3 miles long, and it extends from our Vassar Road Pump Station, which you heard him talk about also, north, cross-country through some subdivisions to the Grand Blank city limits. This interceptor actually also goes into the city of Grand Blank, and it curves up through the Jewel Golf Course and ends at the Kerrwood Pump Station, which is owned and operated by Genesee County. The interceptor collects sewage from mostly our township, it comes from our Woodfield Pump Station, which collects sewage from all of the Woodfield Development, and then west along Saginaw Street, and then it also collects sewage from other communities like Atlas Township and Holly Township. Currently, that interceptor is 15-inch concrete pipe, and we will be upgrading that to 18- and 24-inch pipe based on location. Some of it's plastic pipe, some of it's concrete pipe.
Mr. Sears, where's, where's the Kerrwood Pump Station at?
Kerrwood is right in the middle of the city in the Indian Hills subdivision, so back behind McFarland Library, in that area, it's back in there. The interceptor was visually inspected in 2019 due to our asset management plan that we just prepared, and it's physically in good condition. Again, the only reason we would upgrade it right now is purely to increase capacity for development. During the construction of this interceptor, we are going to, will be in close proximity to homes in Pine Hollow, some of you are probably familiar with that development, as well as Deer Run, Glen Meadows, and again, I mentioned the Jewel Golf Course. It runs right down some of those fairways, which is another portion that we'll have to work out with Genesee County and Grand Blank, the city of Grand Blank, when that time comes. Portions of this interceptor, I don't have it up there, portions of this interceptor are between 30 and 40 feet deep, and they, it comes within 50 to 100 feet of some homes, all within easements, but the homes were built far enough off the easements that we didn't... But, uh, the homes were built far enough off the easements that we didn't have to worry about it at the time.
So, we do have easements for?
We do, yeah, that is correct. Uh, the next slide that you have there, you probably cannot read this on the screens and I understand that, that's why it's in your packet. This is the cost estimate for, uh, the District Six Sewer. Scott, if you could go down a little bit further, um, I think there's one more page at the bottom. And that project total is, I believe that says nine point three million dollars. The next sewer project, oh, and here's the map of it. So, it's the green line that you see there with the purple dots. The purple dots are the, the manholes, the dark green line, I apologize, the bolded one. Um, you'll see, eh, Pine Hollow's in there, um, and it does go through some residential areas. It also goes next to that lake, um, which we know will be challenging when it's time to construct it. Uh, we have looked at alternative routes also, uh, and nothing has been real feasible yet. But, uh, when we get serious about it, which we'll have to soon, we will obviously dive into that and make sure that, um, we can't, uh, find any other alternatives. Uh, we can't really avoid going through the subdivisions due to the, the fact that it has to connect to the Kerrwood Pump Station. But, um, it's, this is a massive job that we've been planning for, for several years. Uh, plans are, I wanna say maybe ninety percent complete. Uh, Jack Wheatley from Rose here also, he can speak to this a little bit more in a bit when, if you have questions. Um, so as you can see, this stretches, uh, a long ways. It, it could be a phased project. It, it will probably be a multi-year project in, in my opinion.
Yep. You mentioned, uh, Atlas and another municipality?
Holly Township.
So, would they be participating in this cost or?
Well, their customers, well, I, I'm not sure yet and that's something we have to work out with Genesee County. This is a, this used to be a trunk line that was only owned by Grand Blank Township. When those communities hooked into it, it became a multi-community trunk line. Meaning, it serves multiple communities. So, we, we haven't had any discussions with Genesee County yet on updating that trunk line. My, my guess is right now they're gonna say, well, it's being updated purely for Grand Blank Township's benefit because we're the ones that need the capacity. But, in the future, you never know if Atlas Township or Holly Town. Probably Holly Township won't need any more capacity because that's primarily Woodfield and they're built out in Holly Township. But, Atlas Township, you never know what kind of development is gonna come in there. So, those are discussions we need to have.
Jeff, you mentioned a lake, what, what, what lake is that?
I, I don't know if the lake has a name. Slack Lake?
It's in, uh, the subdivision?
In Carriage Hill, you know, if you go up into the Carriage Hill subdivision, you see back there.
Yeah, it's in the back of that.
Not the Lake Ukiah kind.
Make sure.
Mr. Kilmer?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's, uh, what's going on with the, with the golf course, with the jewel?
I'm not sure. I, I, I can't speak to that, I don't know. As far as I know right now, people are still out golfing, so.
Right, but as I understand, there, there, there's some problems there. And will these problems ultimately affect us sewer-wise?
We have the, the right-of-way there, right, or the easement?
Well, the funny thing is that goes through the city of Grand Blank. So, I, I don't know about that portion of who has the easements, who has the right-of-way. So, we'll have to do all of that research. Um, as far as problems with the jewel, I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, I would hope that nothing would affect that project from moving forward. Um, ultimately, the sewer's there, it needs to be upgraded. I, I'm sure we could find a way to get it upgraded, no matter what.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Fike?
And this, this is the county's plan?
This is ours. These, these are Grand Blank Township, uh, interceptor projects.
This isn't the county plan that?
This is not the KCI, this is the alternative to the.
This is our plan, all right, I got you.
There's one more project, uh, Scott, if you'll go.
Right, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, this is, this is an alternative to what we heard from the county.
Correct.
Few weeks ago.
Absolutely.
And is this more expensive or less expensive?
We'll see that at the end of the, the, uh, presentation, but it is more.
Okay.
Wants to keep you in suspense.
I like to keep you, you know, we'll, we'll drop.
I'm on the edge of my seat.
All right, go to the next one.
Yeah, please. The next interceptor project, um, is called the Slack Lake Interceptor. Slack Lake, uh, meanders through Woodfield. It comes from Baldwin Road, east of Saginaw and south down through Woodfield to the Woodfield Pump Station. It picks up, um, all the development along Baldwin Road. Um, it goes west of Saginaw Street and it, like I said, it picks up, uh, areas like the Oaks, um, if you're familiar with that. Um, that interceptor in the ground currently is from, anywhere from eight to twelve-inch clay pipe and fifteen-inch concrete pipe and that'll be upgraded to, I believe, all twenty-one-inch concrete pipe. I think that's an, uh, that's an error where I put twelve-inch PVC. Um, during construction, we have some wet, wetlands to contend with. We're in very close proximity to the Oaks, as I mentioned before. Um, and then we're crossing Woodfield Parkway and Parkhurst Lane, which are the two major thoroughfares for the Woodfield Development. And then we have to cut across Hole Two at the Captain's Club.
Got a question?
Yep.
Director Sears, uh, so, I think when the county was here, asked this question as well, but, um, you know, the only reason why we'd replace a sewer is either because of capacity issues or because of, uh, maintenance.
Correct.
So, um, this project, would this be, you know, the maximum? I mean, is this fully built, will this handle a full build-out of our area?
This is our master plan, uh, capacity limit that we've, we see for build-out, correct. This, this.
Built everything that's buildable in that area.
Yes, absolutely. This actually is what, is one of the projects we need to do to facilitate Tech Village. Um, all of the sewage from Tech Village will go into this interceptor and this interceptor is about at capacity. So, there may be a period of time where we can get Genesee County to allow us to build Tech Village while we are upgrading the sewer. But, um, this one will have to be done in order to get that up and running.
Is there any difference in interruption of service between what the county proposed and this? I mean, will, we have periods of time where?
There would be no, there, there would be no disruption in service at all. Um, obviously, we use means of bypass pumping and, um, you know, sometimes we'll build sewer next to the old sewer and, and connect as we go, but there will be no disruption either way. Um, the disruption to our community with these projects is that we're constructing them in our community. Um, they largely go through residential areas, um, and it'll affect those residents for sure. Some in, you know, uh, higher-valued homes and neighborhoods, um, but they're, you know, that would be the disruption.
I remember seeing a project, I think it was in the city of Flint years ago, where they actually put these round, they, they went, I don't know how deep they were going, but it must've been because they were forty feet deep or something like this. But, constructed like, almost like these, uh, silos going down into the ground. And then they worked probably, you know, to dig the tunnels or whatever for the pipes or have you, I mean.
Sure.
Will this all be open trench kind of construction or will they do something similar?
Most of it will be open trench. There, there will be some boring and tunneling more than likely. Um, but, you know, when we go to cross Woodfield Parkway or Parkhurst Lane or stuff like that, sometimes we can go through wetlands by boring, but, uh, most of it will be open cut, yeah.
Jeff, you may just want to weigh in on what, you know, what you just mentioned earlier, that could be forty feet deep in some areas. And I think we were first looking, we said fifty feet deep even up.
Yeah.
Um, if you can imagine to be fifty feet deep, this, the width of the trench that you have to do to safely construct something that's gonna be fifty feet underground.
And.
I'm trying to get at.
So, if, if a trench is fifty feet deep, it's gonna be twenty, twenty-five feet wide at least.
Just the trench?
Just the trench itself.
Dirt on both sides.
Correct, and, and that is obviously for safety in, in, in the trench for the employees that are working in it. Um, again, sometimes we can do tunneling and boring to avoid that full excavation, but, I don't know how feasible that is on some of this.
Do a section and close it back up and then go to the next section and?
Correct, they, they, as they dig, they lay pipe and they fill it back in. So, if you scroll down to the, um, estimate, this one, um. It got smaller, so if I can even read it.
You're all in large.
Eight point six.
So, this one is estimated at eight point six million.
Which one?
This is Slack Lake. So, this is the one that meanders through the Woodfield Development. And then the next slide would be the map of kinda how it goes, you might wanna zoom back out. And it is the yellow line, the bold yellow line that you see there. So, you can see it coming from, uh, Baldwin Road from across Saginaw Street. Um, it'll go down in a southerly direction and then it picks up there along Woodfield Parkway, Parkhurst Lane and then crosses the golf course. And eventually ends up back in our pump station, uh, which is probably where residents will see the most disruption because we get fairly close to, uh, some homes in that area. This trunk line is not as deep as the District Six trunk line, but it'll still be, um, quite noticeable to them, for sure.
Cuts right between the Oaks?
Correct, yeah, and, and that's not actually a very big area. There, there's a drain, a county drain on one side of, uh, this, the trunk line and then the Oaks is on the other side of it. So, um, it's, there's not a whole lot of room to work through there. Baldwin Road in general, right through there, there's not a whole lot of room to work.
It's on the side of the road?
Correct, yes, it is on the side. But, there will be impacts to the road also, uh, when we get going on it, obviously. When, when we're dealing with interceptors, generally, they're larger and deeper and more times than not, the road commissioner requires some road work, um, when we're done.
We're looking at widening that anyways, but.
Correct. I see where you're going with that. The next slide, uh, down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, talks about the funding a little bit. The, the two interceptor project has, have a combined total of nineteen point three million dollars. Um, these are not projects that the township would be paying cash for. Um, we can generally handle the smaller, uh, three million, five million dollar projects, but this is obviously something we'll be looking to secure debt to pay for. Um, there may be a possibility that we comply for a low-interest SRF loan from the state, um, in twenty-twenty-two, forefunding in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and it, these projects are incorporated into the rate study, which we have discussed calls for a rate increase starting next year, um, anywhere from four percent to eight percent. So, and that's just gonna determine on what projects we move forward. Uh, you know, we, we input that actual data into the rate model and it will give us the rate increase we need. So, we can determine the level of cash we feel comfortable having on hand and then, uh, you know, dictate what the increase will look like. But, we're looking at, either way, to get these projects up and moving, we're gonna be looking at a sewer rate increase.
One of the benefits of, that they mentioned with the county was alleviating some of the, um, problems that we're having in the northwest section of the township with sewer issues. Would this alleviate?
This does not. KCI does because KCI takes capacity out of the township and puts it back into the county interceptor. With this project, we're expanding the capacity in the southern portion of the township, but the flows remain in the township. So, with KCI, we're taking the flows out of our township interceptors and putting it into theirs. With these projects, we don't do that. We're simply just increasing the size of the pipe so that we can flow more sewage through them, basically.
Yes, Ms. Rick Robertson?
Yeah, uh, you indicated it may be possible to apply at the state of Michigan. I presume you mean to say that it, we may be able to apply successfully at the state of Michigan?
May be able to apply successfully, correct.
Okay, all right, because I was, that was my next question is, what are our chances of, of being, uh, successfully, uh?
We can let Jack talk to that a little bit more. He knows, he's a little bit more familiar with the, uh, SRF process. I, I think it's probably, you know. We'll, we'll let him speak to that. I don't wanna give you any better information.
No, it's, it, um, actually, KCI, the, the county is also applying for SRF money for their, for the KCI project. And, um, so, yeah, there are pretty good chances, they base it on need, you know, capacity's a, a good, you know, good reason for it, so. Um, but it's like, and it's not a grant, it's a low-interest loan. There are some grant money that's supposed to be coming, as you, you probably know, through the legis, we're waiting for the, the state legislature to pass some money for the sanitary sewer part of the clean water, um, funding that the governor's passed. But, um, but all we have right now is the SRF funding, which is a low-interest loan, which is pretty low. I mean, it's in the one point nine, two percent, two and a half percent range right now. Um, but, you know, our chances are, you know, fifty-fifty. Sorry to say, it just depends because it's all competitive, right? So, it depends on how many applications they get throughout the state. I know that, um, this KCI also is, you know, is gonna go down and, it could, go down and service northern Oakland County. Um, so, Oakland County is looking at SRF funding if they, if they decide to move forward with their part of it also. So, it's, it's competitive and so it just, it just depends. But, there's, you know, um, not a lot of people going after that money right now, so I think we've had a fifty chance.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick. Thank you.
Two questions for you guys though, is, uh, so on the funding side of it, we would probably have to apply pretty quick, right? Because I know the county was saying that.
Yeah, you can only apply once a year, it's in May, so we've missed.
Okay, all right. How much maintenance is involved with sewer? Because I know, you know, one, one option is to have the county build their, their sewer. The other is to do this and we build it and maintain it. But, how much maintenance is required would, that we would be getting out of if, if we want the county sewer?
You're gonna pay for it, whether you pay the county rates or your own.
Okay.
We, we currently pay the county, uh, for sewage service, obviously. So, we're, we're paying them for the maintenance as is now. Uh, whether those rates will increase or not, I can't speak to that, uh, they've said no, but you never know what'll happen in the future. Uh, interceptors, sewer interceptors don't require a whole lot of routine maintenance unlike our sewer laterals, which you find in subdivisions. They require more maintenance because they're smaller diameter pipe with less flow. So, uh, sewer interceptors are generally self-cleaning. Um, obviously, you've seen, uh, in the news where we have, we have giant sinkholes sucking houses and stuff. We don't have anything that large in Grand Blank Township. And, you know, we do video the interceptors every so often to make sure they're in good shape. We know when there's issues, obviously, we've, we've had backups in the past, mostly from station-related. But, um, again, our sewer system is very well-maintained. It's always been very well-maintained. I have a lot of confidence in it personally. So, um, on the interceptor portion, I don't, I don't think there's much maintenance personally.
Well, like you, like you had mentioned before, you had asked, the, the master plan, mass, planned out the size of all the future sewers to your maximum density. So, they're designed for total build-out, maximum density. So, you won't be addressing this ever again. If you do, it'll be, you'll be through sewer lining, not, not so invasive, you know, not so expensive.
Right.
As digging things up, so.
Is there any?
Anything that's gonna be replaced in the future in Grand Blank Township at least is designed for ultimate capacity.
Is there any maintenance other than replacing or lining that is required or no?
Not really, I mean, any, any maintenance we do in the township now, if there's any kind of sewer issue is, is lined, basically. There's not, we have, uh, it's very rare, I don't wanna talk too much because it always jinxes us. It's very rare that we have to go and dig up our sewer system to make a repair. Usually, there are home leads or stuff like that.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if, you know, I'm just trying to get a picture if we're saving money by doing it ourselves or it's kinda like, do you buy or rent, you know, and, uh, that's what I'm trying to get at. Mr. Raridan?
Which, so you sat through the presentation last week, correct?
Yeah.
Or two weeks ago, whatever.
Sat through a few of them now.
Yeah. Uh, what's, what's your opinion on this?
Well, in my opinion, KCI is the better option.
Because it's, number one, it's, it'd be half the cost roughly.
It is.
And?
And that's the next slide, actually. But, it is close to half the cost. But it is close to half the cost.
And then, number two, it would be less disruptive for...
For the township.
The township.
And it has, it has more benefits for the township also. As far as it benefits a larger portion of the community, where we're redirecting some flow from the northwest portion of the township, which currently floods.
Which one would get done faster? I mean, maybe...
That's a good question. It just depends on how fast we can move and how fast they can move. I, I think roughly, you know...
Probably a year or part.
Right.
For us, or, because I think they said they could start...
I, I think KCI could probably get going a little bit quicker than we could. These are, our projects, understand, they're two separate projects. And they're huge project, they're multi-year projects. So I don't know if they could build KCI in one year. Probably not. That's probably a multi-year project also. But in, in my opinion, there's more benefits to KCI to the township. Obviously, we'll always have these interceptors, they're always going to be in play. We're always going to have, if we have to line them, we're always going to have to televise them. They'll always be there, they're not going away, just because we built KCI. But we don't have to undergo that construction ourselves. There, there is another portion of KCI and our projects that we should cover. In that with KCI, we can, we eliminate the Slack Lake project, basically, is what, what happens. There's, KCI, our portion to build that interceptor is nine point three million dollars. There's a small sewer project that basically goes from Dixie Highway up Saginaw Street that picks up Tech Village. That replaces the Slack Lake interceptor. And that's estimated at two point six million dollars right now. That's compared to eight point six million for Slack Lake, which we have to build for Tech Village also.
Where would they start? I mean, would they start at the area that we need?
The map, you have the map.
Oh, yeah. The next slide is a map of the two projects laid out together. Maybe the next slide is a map of the two projects laid out next to each other. Jack's been working with KCI, so I can let him kind of talk about where they're going to start and how the two project, or the three projects compare.
I have a pointer, so I'll point if that's okay.
Yep, I'll...
So here's the Atlas, Grambling Township line, right north is up. Here's Saginaw Road. Here, the Amish, the... So KCI has the yellow line on this, so you can see it comes in kind of on the east. And then follows, once, down, Harry Road, and then follows Basser, you know, goes Basser all the way to the county line. And when it gets, and then, so that's KCI, which is back to Township, Jeff keeps going. And I think, I think it goes all the way down to Woodfield Township, which is right here. So this is, this is Woodfield, right? And then here's I-75, Dixie coming into Saginaw. So this would, KCI is the yellow line still, coming down. Picked up, we get rid of a pump station, too, you guys will have to operate and maintain every place on occasion. And that's a big one, right? Because that's, that's what's draining, you know, all of this red line, which is the Slack Lake. That Jeff talked about, and then it pumps from here, your pump station pumps from here, pumps up to this blue line, which is part of that District Six. That he showed you also, which continues on. So this would all get, all of this flow that now is coming here would go, would give her the pump station, go, flow by gravity into the KCI, and then north into who's always Montrose, actually. And then this would continue, KCI would continue down into Oakland County, take McClellan Road over to Dixie. And if Oakland County's on board, that's where, that's where it would turn from the Jesse County line to an Oakland County line. Oakland County would take over jurisdiction from that point to go down here. Reason why Jesse County would own it a little bit, Oakland County, they wanted to pick up that line that Jeff had just mentioned that would service Tech, Tech Village, which is this green line. So that's that two point six million that Jeff had just mentioned that goes on top of the number three for KCI. You guys would have to build that one yourself, not the county. Okay, so then, if you did KCI, you know, this existing Slack Lake would drain into that. This would pick up all of this, like Jeff was saying, all of this flow, take it out of Grambling Township, which would alleviate upstream from downstream issues, too. Okay, so then this blue line is, is the District Six, and you can see where it wanders in and through all the subdivisions and such. And then when it turns to the purple line, that's the city. So you've got, those are two options, the, the blue and then the red line for KCI.
Back up to the one on the previous slide, Joe.
Yeah, if you could.
That one there, maybe?
That one right there is a good one.
So the, the Tech Village, now that's something that the township absorbs, correct?
Correct, yep.
And, and so that's going to happen at the same time, or?
We would probably build it at the same time. That, that line is dependent on Tech Village being developed. And it could be in conjunction with the sewer being built, built through Tech Village also. Because the township is planning on participating in that. So that could be one project through there. That is something we will construct ourselves, is that line down Saginaw Street to McClellan Road. The District Six and Slack Lake versus the KCI, this just outlines what the, the cost difference is. Estimated at, at this point with KCI and with our projects. I know Jack and Row updated our project cost estimates maybe a month ago. And these are pretty updated for KCI also. But that's our current contributions to that. Like I said before, the Dixie Highway sewer replaces Slack Lake, and it'll pick up Tech Village. Any projects that we construct, we will obviously do all the design engineering and the project administration. The county will handle everything with KCI. So all we'll do is contribute to the funding for it.
The bottom line cost difference between the two, what, what do you think?
It's, it's six million dollars.
What's that?
It's, it's roughly six million dollars.
Six million, less?
Less for KCI than our projects are.
So you amortize that, and we're talking sewer, so it's on everybody's sewer bill?
It will be.
So, I mean, it's less than a dollar, you say, or something like that?
You're doing a lot of math right now.
All right.
Mr. White?
I'd like to hear Dennis's opinion on this. What do you think, Dennis?
On the one hand, what the board needs to know is that we have to do one or the other if we're going to get our capacity for buildout. So it's, it's, one or the other's going to happen sooner or later, unless we just stop doing any buildout in the, in the south end of the township, which I don't think is where we were headed, based upon forming a DDA and some of the other things we've done. So knowing that, knowing we're going to have to move one, one or the other. We have been planning this for quite some time. It has been in our capital projects plan for a number of years, and it was included in our rate study. So this isn't like, we're not throwing something on you guys that hasn't been studied for, going back to, my God, like, two thousand and four, I think. I mean, it's, it's been looked at for a long time, knowing that it was going to come up. You know, I look at the six million dollars as one thing. I don't want the board to lose sight of, Trustee White brought up a very valid point at a previous conversation in that, you know, we're participating with Oakland County, and this does put sewer through northern Oakland County. They don't have it right now, so they can't compete with us as far as some, for putting in some of the buildout that they have. It will absolutely open up Oakland County for more development than they would have now. The one thing they wouldn't have, though, is water, like in the Holly Township area, because it's, it's going to be a long time before they get water run up to the area that would be impacted mostly there. But it will provide them with sewer, so that does give, makes them more viable, you know, as a competitor for development. So could we lose some development to Oakland County? The answer's absolutely, and it's a very valid point. But knowing that we have to do one way or the other, and I think right now, you know, it's sooner rather than later. When you look at the project's going to be, if we initiated it now, we're three years out, you know, maybe before we could, you know, get funding lined up and, and be ready for completion. And I'm saying that you guys will probably need to make a decision, certainly not tonight. We had John O'Brien come and talk to you first, we wanted Jeff to kind of do a comparison, give you an opportunity to digest it, ask some more questions, gather more information, or ask us for more information, and then you'll be asked to make a decision. But it, it's coming, and, and right now, I mean, I was against KCI when I first heard it, quite frankly. Because I look at it as, if we do our own project, you know, we're not relying on anyone else. Yes, we're going to be responsible for long-term maintenance, but then we also own an asset in the ground. I'm going to spend seventeen point nine million dollars, but I'm going to have seventeen point nine million dollars of an asset in the ground on the books that I'm going to depreciate over time. If I, if I work with KCI, I'm basically buying capacity without an asset in the ground. It is an asset to us because we own capacity in it, so we do own it. But owning capacity in there doesn't give me something to depreciate on the books either. I'm not a part owner, I'm just purchasing capacity, basically. And you heard that from when we had John O'Brien here from Water and Waste, was you could always have the opportunity to sell or buy more capacity if somebody needed more. But we're, we're sizing this thing to make sure that it meets our capacity needs for the foreseeable future. There's nothing else, and you heard Mr. Wheatley say that tonight. It's designed to, to meet our capacity needs for the immediate future and, and beyond. So we're not going to be expanding anytime after we do this. But I, when I look at the overall totality of the project, six million dollars is a lot of money, but at the same time, don't forget going through those subdivisions and, and, you know, forty foot deep in areas to make sure we can do gravity fed. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big deal, it's a huge deal. And, and we get to get rid of a pump station in Woodfield, which is also a huge deal. Those things are a lot of money, pump station would be a million dollars when you have to renew that thing, and they require maintenance. So you're eliminating that. Anytime we can eliminate a pump station is a good thing, and go with, with gravity and go with KCI's system. So I've come around to supporting KCI, quite frankly, as a better deal. The six million dollars doesn't sound like a better deal, but all in all, it addresses more issues, like we talked about. It buys time in the northwest quadrant of the township for some of the I and I issues that we have up there. So, so there's, there's other advantage, other intrinsic advantages, but, you know, luckily, I don't have to make that decision, you do. But don't lose sight, and I'm serious about, don't lose sight of what Trustee White said about, you know, opening up capacity for Oakland County. Although sometimes, you know, success breeds success, success is a good thing. We know from the conversations we've had with current developers or investors that are, have some land under contract right now, that they don't have any place to build, they're looking for that I-75 frontage, and that's what we have right now with, with the trim pines and Alesburg properties, as well as a Tech Village properties. We've got that advantage there, and it's made us very, very attractive. But one way or the other, we need to have one of these built, probably in the next, you know, it's got to be completed in three years or four years if we're going to move forward.
Mr. Eardan?
I have actually two questions, one for probably you and David, and then one for Mr. Wheatley. The first is, what happens, the county's in, their financial position probably is not the best. I'm just, what happens if we start a project and the money, could they go bankrupt, or, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, and I understand where you're coming from. The county struggles with, from revenue and with some unfunded liabilities, like a lot of municipalities. One of the things when you're talking about projects like this is, again, the difference between business-type funds and government-type funds. These are business-type funds or enterprise funds, the system has to pay for itself, it's, it's passed on to customers. So the county could conceivably get into trouble financially and maybe have trouble with their government fund side of things. But the business side of things, we're, we're fine. They will, they will be funded, those costs are shared by all the customers, all the participants in Genesee County Water and Waste. So there's not a danger of that fund going bankrupt.
Unless there are to raid the fund, which we haven't seen that, so.
Jack, so which one, so you're, you're an expert in this field, which one?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I'm trying to be unbiased as much as I can, you know, to look at the pros and cons. You have the, the cons are that you lose control over, you know, some control when you give it to somebody, you lose control over the rates somewhat, and those kinds of things. And Dennis mentioned some of the other cons to it. But you, you know, this isn't atypical, because all your sewer flows to the county in some, you know, in a number, a number of places around the township. So it's not an unusual thing for the township, it's not unprecedented. I think the pros kind of, you know, from a dollar standpoint, obviously. I think getting rid of that pump station is a good thing, it's not that old, but they don't have a lifespan as a pipe does, right? And so I, I think there's a few more pros on the KCI side than there are cons in my head. But, you know, there's...
So one of the things that has to happen is the other communities, don't they have to vote? I mean, similar to, we are here to participate, or not?
The way that, the way I understand Genesee County Water and Waste Services is looking at it is, Grambling Township is going to be the main decision maker for whether this goes forward or not. So, and they'll build it with, you know, the capacity for Atlas and maybe even Davidson Township towards the north end, because this doesn't, this doesn't tie in until I say north on I-69 or Monty Irish Road. So they're going to build in a little bit extra capacity of that, and they'll, they'll get that fund and tap into it. That's how, that's how a lot of these get paid for, anyways, is the tap, tap-in funds through some of the capital.
So it, it won't be dependent on if Ortonville votes their, their township?
Oakland County is looking more at, they've looked into two regions, but one region would just be Dixie Highway all the way down to Grange Hall. So Holly, Oakland Township, that gets them down to the Grange Hall exit, you know, on I-75, and then also the new RRB, maybe Shannon, and, you know, some of those other undeveloped areas along there. I don't think that Genesee County is depending on Oakland County moving forward. I think if you guys say yes, I think they're going to go forward.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I mean, basically...
I just wondered if we're, if we were going to vote on this thing, and then we got to wait and see what everybody else said.
I mean, like Dennis touched on, our cost here is buying the capacity in the system. We're paying now because we need the capacity now. These other communities, the county is building that portion of it, they're paying for that portion, and those communities will buy their capacity when they need their capacity.
Gotcha.
But it can't exceed, I mean, they can't dump too much capacity.
No, they won't, there, there's only, this is only built with so much capacity, and the county can only put so much into it.
So for instance, if Grambling Township, for instance, took fifty percent?
Correct.
They could not sell?
Sixty, they couldn't do that.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Remember, this is also going to be permitted by the state, so through the Eagle, you know, it used to be the DQ. Although, they've got tech controls on what the treatment plan can handle, and Montrose, I was saying, where all this is going to go to. They, they know what that capacity is, and they can't just handle it. And just hand it handle the ultimate capacity of this due to the fact in the future. And they may have to make some improvements to the treatment plan, but this will have to be approved, you know, by the state law, so. And one last pro, I think, for KCI is really the destruction of, of those neighborhoods we're going to have to go through because of the depths. When you get into those depths, you're never quite sure the cost, you know, it, there's all kinds of stuff that can happen. You know, we're doing, we're just, just getting done with that sewer over in District Eight, which was servicing Genesis. And we're only like, what, twenty feet deep, and the road product, and there's an authenticity problem, and you can go to the depths. It's, it's a lot, a lot of what the KCI force manages is, like, twenty feet deep, so the risk is the last one.
Mr. White?
So let's wrap here. Dennis likes it, Jeff likes it, Jack likes it. It's six million less, it's less disruptive in our neighborhoods. It helps our neighbors on the north end of the township. It sounds like a no-brainer to me. It does give a giant Christmas gift to Oakland County. But hey, we're generous folk here in Grambling.
No, I, I had some of the same concerns that Mr. White, you know...
I, I had some of the same concerns that Mr. White, you know, had voiced in that, not that I want to be real parochial in terms of we're only going to do it for our, our community, but, you know, it helps something to develop, and that Dixie Highway corridor really hasn't had a whole lot of development over the years. From what I see, the off-road vehicle park is bringing tons of people to that area. The, the state park down there and the county park, the county park, I don't think, I think you got to book a year in advance if you want to camp there, and they do a great job of packing people in there. Our development, Tech Village is going to take off here in the next couple of years. And, I mean, we, we will have some limits, you know, eventually on our growth. We still have plenty of room for development, but does it help us or hurt us to have, you know, Dixie Highway south of Grambling Township developed further? I guess that's kind of the sixty-million-dollar question. And, you know, I look at some of the communities down, say, for example, Auburn Hills, I'm real impressed with. You know, they went from being a township to a city years ago. And, you know, you look at, they border on Rochester Hills and some others, and, you know, it's all the same county, but still different municipalities. I got to believe they share some of those same systems, obviously. So does it hurt us to, to help those others? If it's not depleting our capacity, probably wouldn't in that regard, but it's, you know, it's a question. Six million bucks savings to our residents. What I like is helping people in the north part, northwest part of the township. Because I'm not sure we're ever going to get an opportunity to resolve their sewer issues other than a project like KCI is there, I mean.
It's difficult. I mean, it's very difficult because those are, the major contribution to the flooding issues we have there are homes that are basically discharging surface water into the sewer system through their sun pumps and footing drains. So in order for us to correct that, we have to be able to go into the homes and correct it, or we have to compel homeowners to do that, which, as you can imagine, will be very difficult. As we rebuild roads, we've been putting in some collector systems and trying to encourage people to connect to it, but not everybody does, and we can't compel them to, so.
That's what's weighing on me heavy is that, you know, while I'd like to remain parochial and only see our township develop north part too, I also know, and we've talked about in our strategic planning, that north of Hill Road, we, we need to focus some attention up here on, even though they're older homes, what have you, we want to preserve it and make it a, continue to make it a great place to live, if not improve it from where it is now. And if we have areas with flooding, it's going to deter people from wanting to move there once they hear, hear that. We already have a surface water problem over there.
Right.
In addition, we've got sewer. It's not good.
Correct.
So I think, you know, the board will have, we're not going to decide tonight, obviously, I don't think, but.
Right.
We need to do it fairly soon. We've got some development that potential, you know, and we, we believe that there's going to be some development there in the next couple of years. So we need to get some capacity in addition to what we have right now.
And it's a big decision, and I'm available outside of the meeting also if anybody wants to meet here, has any questions.
Any other questions, Mr. Sears or Mr. Wheatley?
On the KCI, if Oakland County doesn't go with it, are we still, we're not going into Oakland County, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it would stay within Genesee County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work on putting together the comparison, what have you. Okay, next item on the agenda is.
Seven D.
Item D, the board will consider a motion to award a security glass installation contract to Total Security Solutions of Fowlerville, Michigan for fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and authorize Township Superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. Yes, you make the motion, Joel?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Feig makes the motion, supported by Hugo.
Okay, supported.
Have some discussion now. Mr. Limada?
This actually came about three years ago. We did our first Alice training here that Chief Wiles could tell you what Alice stands for, but it is a safety training that the Police Department provides to schools, municipalities. It's about safety for employees, and one of the recommendations that came out of that is the officers who conducted that training for us made the recommendation that we put security glass across the counters throughout the township. And it was a considerable expense. We weren't sure at that time that we wanted to move through it. There's been a lot of conversation about it, and, you know, the recommendation, we did a follow-up training a year later, or two years later, and the same recommendation came back out of that, that we consider that as one of the recommendations that they provided us. Well, when COVID hit and we had to put up Plexiglas everywhere, we started to look at it again in a different way because it actually kills two birds with one stone. You have safety glass up there, but you also have a natural barrier from a pandemic or a viral perspective. We did a lot of research on it. Mr. Sears and his Assistant DPW Director Greg Boggs did a fantastic job with researching and showing us the alternatives that were available. The one that was selected here still is very resident-friendly, while it is glazed and provides that safe, secure, and also a barrier from any, if, knock on wood, if we ever have any future pandemics, or if this one lingers for a while, but it does provide that. But it is more friendly because the openings are like a rounded opening, and there's another pane of glass that sits back like four or five inches that's slightly bigger, but it leaves that opening around there. One of the problems with having glassed encounters for a lot of places are the muffled sounds. You can't hear, and then add people wearing masks, and you have a real issue with being able to communicate with people. This one actually does allow for that free flow. You can hear, sort of address that, and that was one of the concerns that we had. So this is the one that we, after we went through and looked at everything, this is the one that we select that we think is the, the best value for us and certainly provides dual-fold. Will it qualify for use of ARPA funds? I can't answer that question yet. I have looked into it because it is COVID-related, so we're, we're looking into that. It may be completely eligible. We may find out that it's completely eligible, and we can pay for it out of those ARPA funds, which would be fantastic, but I can't tell you that for a fact yet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Sears, be happy to answer any questions for you as well.
Okay. Don't see any questions. So it's not a resolution, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda, item E. The board will consider a motion to hold a special board meeting on June 21st at 5:00 PM to receive and accept the results of the 2020 Certified Annual Financial Report from Plant Marine. So we're, we have a meeting scheduled for the 29th, but that won't work for me anyways, but.
Item F, of course, is canceling that.
Right, yep. So we're looking at a special meeting on the 21st at 5 o'clock. Basically, we need to have four board members here. We've gone through the audit already. This is to, to approve.
I'll make a motion if the motion's in order.
Yes.
And move that we hold a special board meeting on June 21st at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Your support, supported by Ms. Hugo?
Okay, moved and supported.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item is actually to cancel the meeting for June 29th. Okay, motion by Treasure Kilmer, support by Trustee Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, seven, nothing. Voice vote?
So future agenda items, I know we'll be talking about our strategic plan here coming up. Mr. Limada, anything to report?
So we have met again. They've gotten more clearly defined. I, there's a grid that I use that really spells it out. I think you may have shared it with the board previously. We're defining those for the strategies and tactics for carrying out the key objectives that the board identified that they want to do. We expect to have that in front of you at the first meeting in July. You could be prepared to adopt the strategic plan at that time, or it could be an opportunity for more feedback, and you send it back to us. Really, it's really to focus on those first-years strategies that we're going to carry out so that we can complete this thing in the timeframe that the board has selected. It's been, I can tell you that it's been really good from a board perspective. I love the way the administrative team came together, the way they formed coalitions to work on things that they were interested in, whether it involved their department or not. So I thought that was kind of a, a key issue, just to see the way the team came together. I couldn't be happier or prouder of the administrative team that we've assembled here with all the department heads and the staff that have weighed in on, on how to, how to take the board's ideas, goals, and strategic objectives and move those forward. I think you guys will be very pleased when you see it. As I said, we've made tremendous progress. There's some fine tuning we want to do before you present it. If you want to see preliminaries, I can send those out to you, but otherwise, you'll see that in the first meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go through board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything on planning permission?
Nothing to report.
All right, anything, Mr. White, zoning, Board of Appeals?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Feig, anything with Metro Alliance?
I meet tomorrow.
Okay. Anything on police, Mr. Reardon?
John Schwartz was promoted to sergeant today from officer.
Very good.
Excellent choice, I might add.
Okay, very good. Treasure Kilmer, anything?
No.
Okay. Rick Robertson?
Uh, no, Mr. Supervisor.
I'm hearing rumblings you may have an election in November.
There are rumors to that effect, yes.
Okay.
But I, but I, we won't know for certain until July.
The only thing that I'll report on is that, a couple of things. One is, we had a 911 consortium meeting this past week, and one of the hot topics is emergency medical services. That, one of the dilemmas that the county is facing is that there's a shortage of EMS workers. And so at times, they're bringing in EMS service from Perry, Michigan, and I don't know where else. Right. So we probably will want to have that topic on our agenda here in maybe the next few weeks because there's a lot of discussion surrounding that and what some possible solutions are and what have you. But hopefully, people's lives are on the line and, you know, when you have a shortage of ambulances or a shortage of EMS. But there is the possibility that municipalities could contract with an EMS service to make sure that you do have providers in your community. And I believe the City of Fontaine does that currently. Chief Burdette actually serves on the committee that's discussing that, right? Okay, the DDA, we have a meeting next week. We're moving forward with working on plans to further expand Baldwin Road corridor. Mr. Limada's been working very diligently on trying to secure additional funding. I don't want to cut into his report, but Mr. Wheatley and Row Engineering's working on that. But we also have a, a marketing committee with the DDA that's been meeting to look at how we can better market the whole DDA area. Our, our marketing committee has been working on a few different logo designs and ideas that our staff, Melissa Roberts, has been working diligently. And maybe if Sarah and Joel can stick around afterwards for just a minute, we can figure out what our next meeting date will be, and maybe Melissa would be willing to share some of the ideas that we've developed or she's developed here with, using somebody. So with that, turn it over to Mr. Laddi, anything to report on?
No, just, just a one comment, quick comment on your 911 information. I, I've had some experience with a municipal ambulance company partnership in, in Argentine and Alice, and they're, you know, it's hard to compare them to Grambling Township, but those, those met with some mixed results. So when we, if, if we have to begin that investigation, look what, what our options are, there are a couple of ideas to try to, try to improve on the last round of that effort, but it's, it's always fascinating to, to have to explore that stuff. Other than that, I have nothing to add.
I'm not assuming that we're going that way. I'm just saying that's, that's one of the things that some people have discussed. I'm not saying that I'm in favor or anything else on it. I want to hear all sides of it.
It would take a lot of, a lot of study and a lot of.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you, Mr. Laddi. Mr. Limada?
Like Supervisor Bennett had alluded to, Baldwin Road needs to be upgraded to a Class A all-season road to accommodate the build-out and truck traffic. The Dort Highway extension is nearing its completion, so the DDA has taken that. They have hired Row Engineering to work on doing the preliminary design engineering for that. That's kind of coming to fruition moving along. The costs are increased, as you would expect, since it appears that every, all the costs on every single item forever, it's not just toilet paper anymore, it's everything, but including the, the cost of road construction. So we're, we're working through that. We're looking for some additional funding through the federal program, TEDF funding. We sent a letter of intent highlighting a proposed employer who could bring potentially up to three hundred and seventy-five jobs into the area, who has some property under contract, and that is very exciting. I can't wait to announce it. I know I do this a lot and then can't tell you anymore, or I'd have to kill you. But it, it is exciting to think about three hundred and seventy-five jobs. You got to understand, every one of those is worth money from a government standpoint that we can put towards that road. And when you start talking about over three million dollars for that section of row between Holly and, and the Dort Highway extension, and that we also are going to need to upgrade eventually from the I-75 overpass down to Saginaw to make that whole thing an all-season Class A road for that area to be viable. That's going to take us a few years, but this section is, is a go. It's going to be 2022. We're looking at that funding. The DDA has committed, you know, and they'll obviously have to seek to bond that project out. It will come back to the board. You guys will have to give the DDA the, the okay because ultimately, you guarantee that the DDA is, is going to pay for that. This is going to be a well-funded DDA. The growth in there is going to be phenomenal. A lot of DDAs, it takes them a decade before they even have enough money in their funds to be able to move it all. You guys have the benefit of having a DDA that is well-funded right from the get-go. We got it in there just under the wire when Magna was built, so they already have a pretty solid income stream coming in every year. All of the other taxing entities in Genesee County supported the Grambling Township DDA, which they understand who's putting the butter on the bread, I think, and they agreed that they would allow you guys to keep what should have been their revenue as we grow in order so that we can do public improvements there, which can include bike paths, sidewalks, wayfinding signage, water, sewer, broadband. I mean, there's anything that would be a public good within that DDA district. Scott and I had a great meeting today with Joy Finkenbiner, the COO of Ascension Genesis, talking about, you know, potential for some long-term partnership with them on assisting us in funding our non-motorized pathways. So all that's very good, and we've had a tremendous amount of economic development interest lately. I've been fielding a lot of questions on available properties. I'm excited. It's preliminary, but you just never know when one of them is going to take off. So it's, it's really a good time to be a part of Grambling Township with just the amount of interest that's generated. And of course, last year was a dud, but, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, not a lot of people looking to start big commercial ventures. I'm real excited about where we're at now because we've just had a, one heck of a lot of interest. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shameless plug for Parks and Recreation Director Patrick Linehan. They've got a luau planned. It's going to be the event of the year out at Bicentennial Park. Be there or be square. Get your tickets now online. They're only thirty dollars. And it's on July?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
I'm going to be there. I'm going to have at least a table there.
So the, you know, the hula dancers, the fire dancers, definitely got to be some of them. If you haven't stalked our Facebook page recently, scroll down, look at some of the videos. We've got a post from the Polynesian dancers of Michigan, so you can kind of see a taste of, you know, what it's going to be. a taste of, you know, what it's going to be. Speaking of taste, there's going to be a pig roast there, we're working with a local vendor, or vendor, it's going to be a, you know, displayed dressed pig, there's going to be a chicken option, and, you know, we want to thank a lot of our sponsors, you know, that are coming through to really help this event, you know, come off, so it's going to be cool.
How many do we have room for, Patrick?
So, you know, comfortably, you know, working with the fire department and Chief Wiles, you know, 500 people max, you know, we're looking comfortably around 250, but everything is pre-registration, so if you're interested, no more than two weeks out, because we have to make sure that we have all the food and alcohol and everything ordered ahead of time, so.
All right.
You won't wait till the last minute to get your ticket, or, you know, call us a week before, you know, I won't be able to get you, and I'm sorry.
Very good. I'm looking forward to it. Anything else that?
Is a motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
And I will make that motion to adjourn.
I just want to make a note here that the reason why I can't make it to the meeting on the 29th is that I'm going to be very honored to be going to northern Michigan to the Michigan Chiefs of Police Association Conference, and our chief of police, Ron Wiles, will be sworn in as the president of the Michigan Chiefs of Police Association, so. So, looking forward to that, and quite an honor to have our chief.
You're here.
Position, so, anyways, congratulations, Ron. Okay, so the motion to adjourn has been made, support by?
By Fike.
Fike, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye. We are adjourned at 8:32.
Thank you, everyone.
Adjourn 8:32, 8:32 PM.